... public access channel. So, we're gonna start with our budget hearing. Wait, are we gonna do Eliza first? Student is going to report first so that she can leave and then we will do the budget hearing.
All right. So, at the primary school, the first grade musical production Swamp will be performed on April 10th at 6:00 PM for families at the Lunenburg Primary School. All Lunenburg Primary students will attend the performance during the school day. There will be an Easter egg hunt at Kids Kingdom April 20th at 2 o'clock for ages zero to 11. The second annual mother and son dance is Saturday, May 11th from 6:30 to 9:30 at the Great Old Lodge Ballroom. You get some $14. At the Turkey Hill Elementary School, the Special Olympics is Friday, April 26th at Fitchburg State University. The first annual jog-walk-a-thon for Kylie's Care Kits was very successful and they will be donating $5,036 to the Kylie Care Kit Organization. At the middle school, the Lunenburg after-school music program is starting its final session of the year on April 8th. Forms are due by the 5th for placement. And at the high school, Annie Junior the Musical will be performed on May 10th and 11th. National Honor Society Blood Drive is May 1st. The high school community service learning class will present their projects on April 10th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the high school project room. And lastly, spring sports start their games and meets this week.
Thank you. Thanks.
You're welcome.
So, now, we're gonna start the budget hearing and then at the end of Dr. Burnham's presentation, if you have a comment or a question, just come to the microphone and state your name, address, and make your comment or question, have your question. Okay? Is it up there too or no?
No.
Oh. We are. Oh.
There it is.
Okay.
Now it is.
All right.
Okay, so, we will begin by stating our mission statement and that is to provide all the students of Lunenburg the skill, confidence, and passion for lifelong learning so that they may find their own paths to successful careers, active citizenship, and rewarding lives. Next, we'll look at budget priorities. This year, we entered the process with a few priorities guiding our development of the budget. One of those was the school committee's goal two, which was to approach the budget process with impact on teaching and learning as a focus. The other guiding document was the district strategic plan and the goals therein that focus on social-emotional learning, civic learning and engagement, curriculum assessment, digital literacy and computer science, professional development, support for struggling learners, enrichment opportunities, and collaboration and communication. Next, we'll talk about the budget process. Process began in August. The district leadership team was asked to evaluate the goals of the strategic plan for the highest impact on teaching and learning. Goals one, five, and six were identified as the goals that have the greatest impact on teaching and learning. In October, department leaders and building administrators developed the FY20 budget requests focused on the highest impact on teaching and learning and alignment with the district strategic plan goals. In November, budgets were submitted. Individual meetings with each department head and building administrator to review budget timeline requests were held and budget increases were presented to the district leadership team. Each budget increase requested was explained by the administrator and/or the department head. Following the presentations, the team prioritized budget increases in terms of highest impact on teaching and learning and alignment with the district strategic plan. In December, the superintendent's proposed FY20 budget was presented to the school committee. At that time, it included an 8% increase in health insurance costs and the overall increase as presented in December was a 5.9% increase. In January, in early January, we held forums to present the budget to staff. In late January, we held community forums and the town manager provided her target budget to the school department and at that time, that was 2.5%. In February, adjustments were made to the superintendent's proposed FY20 budget to reflect a maximum 5% increase for health insurance costs and at that point, that brought the proposed budget to an overall increase of 5.5%, down from 5.9%. An update was provided to the school committee estimating a reduction of 9.0 FTEs that would be needed to close the gap between the proposed FY20 budget and the town manager's target budget. In March, we made additional adjustments to the superintendent's proposed FY20 budget to reflect the final health insurance cost, an actual decrease in cost equal to 2.45% and to reflect the transportation cost based on a bid and that would have been an increase of 3.45%. The adjusted budget is now at a 4.2% increase. Recommended reductions to close the gap between the superintendent's proposed FY20 budget and the town manager's target budget were presented to the school committee. Late March, we made adjustments based on an increase in the town manager's target budget, now up to 3% and this results in the budget that we'll present to you this evening. I think it's worthwhile to, again, touch on some funding data. As we've reported before, we, Lunenburg, participated in a panel discussion at Fitchburg State University. We were among members of a panel representing several districts. I've enclosed the slides into this presentation that were presented that evening. The discussion that evening was around the challenges all districts are facing relative to the foundation budget and the formula to fund foundation budget. So, again, it's just for informational viewing, you can see that there are gaps between what should be funded for in the foundation budget according to the formula versus what actual needs may be. Additional data that we provided with the initial presentation in December and again at the finance committee meeting mid-March, we used the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education radar tool. That tool can pull a comparison with your district and 10 other districts and they pull two different groupings. One grouping is based on districts with similar student population. The other is based on similar community wealth. When you take a look at the figures that are presented here, you can see that in the bold red, that's where Lunenburg falls in, in terms of our per pupil expenditures and you can see comparatively speaking, in that grouping with similar student population, the only district that falls lower in a per pupil expenditure is West Bridgewater. And when you take a look at districts with similar wealth, we are the lowest in that grouping of town. I think it's worthwhile noting, in terms of additional funding data, you can take a look at FY16 actual expenditures, FY17 actual, FY18 actual. We can't give you the actual yet for FY19 because we're currently still in FY19. And then you can see, there's a column there for the town manager's target budget of a 3% increase as well as a column representing the 4.2% increase that was presented as the proposed budget in December. You'll note that it's broken down into the percentage of the school department budget that is funded through Chapter 70 as well as the percentage funded through local funds. And you can see that over the last handful of years, there's been a slight decline annually in the percentage funded through local funds and an increase in the percentage funded through Chapter 70 funds. So, just wanna take everybody back to the budget that was proposed in December. The leadership team worked together in November and identified needs and this was the beginning of the process that we engaged in. So, we identified many positions and at the time, based on factoring in for an 8% increase in health insurance, this list of additional positions with that health insurance factored in would have been an overall increase of 8%. We realized that that's not a reasonable ask for the town. So, the leadership team worked to prioritize that list. What remained on that prioritized list and found its way into the proposed budget in December was a central office secretary position, a grade-one teacher, paraprofessionals, an athletic trainer, a unified basketball coach, two student custodians. And you'll note that in this list, the literacy coach and the middle school coaches are bolded. Please note that we are still seeking alternate funding sources. If funding sources become available, those positions may be implemented. So, now, we'll take a look at the comparative numbers between the town manager's guideline with the 3% increase compared to the proposed budget from December. The difference between the 3% increase and the proposed 4.2% increase equates to a dollar amount of $233,125 difference. So, now, we'll get to the recommended budget. So, the recommended budget is with an overall increase of 3%. Total salaries would actually be an increase of 3.1% and total expenses, an increase of 2.8% and the overall, as I said, is a 3% increase. This means that we have to make some cuts to the proposed budget to reach that 3% and I wanted to reiterate the priorities that the leadership team used to guide that process. Our goal was to provide a quality, free public education, preserve student access to a well-rounded educational program, allocate resources to meet student need, lower class size particularly at the elementary, inflict the least negative impact on students, allocate resources in alignment with the district strategic plan goals, and the school committee goal to allocate resources for the greatest impact on teaching and learning. So, that brings us to what now is part of the 3% recommended budget this evening. So, the new positions that were proposed in December, we have taken the athletic trainer position off of this 3% budget. We will still look to see if we have a funding source for the literacy coach and the middle school coaches. The literacy coach, I won't be able to determine until mid-late July when we receive notification of allocations for our title grant monies. If monies are available, we will revisit that position. Positions that are reduced in order to meet that 3% budget, one foreign language teacher at the middle school, one paraprofessional at the high school, what we've been calling the bubble teacher that is now assigned with the current fifth-grade class that will be moving up to the sixth grade. That position will be eliminated. At the high school, the part-time greenhouse manager position will be eliminated and a part-time secretary position at Turkey Hill Elementary will be eliminated. I think it's worth noting where the money to close that $233,000 gap comes from. You can see under non-personnel, there was a total savings of $30,216. That includes reduction to the primary school library book line, elimination of the $2,000 that was budgeted for the middle school library books. At the middle school, the science supply line was reduced. At the primary school, the general supply line was reduced. At the middle school, the computer supply line, one line, was eliminated. At the primary school, repair of music equipment was reduced. We are constantly looking at actual costs for health insurance, so based on the most recent review of actual health insurance costs, we were able to make a bit of a reduction there as well. The primary school furniture and equipment line was reduced. The Turkey Hill furniture and equipment line was reduced. And then, under personnel, there's a savings of $2,2911. The elimination of the building leadership stipends at the middle school, the elementary school, and the primary school, the department head stipends at the high school, the part-time secretary position at Turkey Hill, the bubble teacher currently at Turkey Hill, the foreign language teacher at the middle school, the greenhouse manager position, the paraprofessional position along with an examination and a slight reduction in the number of paraprofessional hours for some paraprofessionals, not all, as well as the reduction of the athletic trainer. So, what's the impact? We have reduced supply accounts. We have reduced the hours of some of our paraprofessional positions. We have reduced stipends. There may be some fewer club advisors paid a stipend. That does not mean that we are significantly impacting or eliminating a number of clubs. The number of clubs that run is annually reviewed, should be annually reviewed based on student participation and that will continue. Ultimately, the long-term for these reductions, they need to be restored. We can't sustain this level of reduction long-term. At the Turkey Hill, again, the impact for the part-time secretary, we have moved some monies into an overtime account for the secretary at the Turkey Hill for periods of time during the year where there might be an increased demand for her time. At the Lunenburg Middle School, the impact of that bubble teacher position, a grade-seven teacher will be switched to grade-six to accommodate the larger class size. This will make six grade-six teachers. The past several years, we've had six to 10 new sixth graders register over the summer, so we will continue to watch enrollment. As a result of that transition, grade-seven will function with five full-time teachers and again, that class size will be approximately 26. There will be one class with a class size of 27. A foreign language teacher at the middle school, this would essentially be the elimination of a program that has been developed over the past two years in which students are exposed to three languages and different cultures in order to make a more informed decision on which foreign language they would want to take in grade-eight. As a result, the middle school will run sixth and seventh grade specials and enrichment with one less offering, making enrichment class sizes larger. At the high school, the proposed athletic trainer, the district will not have an athletic trainer on staff. The district will attempt to contract available athletic trainers in the local area at a per diem rate when possible. The department will continue to provide the safest environment within the means available to the student athletes. The position is going to be a requirement by the state for any school districts running an athletic program. We anticipate that that will be mandated at some point in the future, but it has not yet been mandated, so we need to keep a watchful eye on this as we may need to implement this position. The impact of the paraprofessional reduction at the high school, ultimately, will have an impact on the high school advisory program. We're currently working with the LEA to find a solution to maintain the integrity of the advisory program. The greenhouse manager, there would no longer be small group activities facilitated in the greenhouse and the responsibility for the care and maintenance of the greenhouse when school is not in session will have to fall to other staff and students to take on those responsibilities. So, looking forward, I think it's important to note enrollment is something that we're keeping our eyes on. We know that there are no reliable projections that we can count on to plan ahead in terms of staffing. We have seen that over the last four years, there's been a steady increase in enrollment. This year alone, we saw an increase in the kindergarten registration of 33%. We've examined town birth records, which also indicates some increases and those increases are sort of maintaining themselves steady over a six-year period of time. We did move the kindergarten registration from mid-March, as it was held last year, to early February. Currently, the enrollment number for kindergarten is at 101. Numbers may dictate a relocation of our preschool program to make space available at the primary school and it's difficult at this point to anticipate staffing needs. We're gonna have to monitor the enrollment. Again, we presented this in December. I also presented this data to the finance committee mid-March and it's just the data that we collect and report to the state every year, our enrollment numbers as of October 1st. You can see dating back to October of 2009, there were several years where we saw a decline in enrollment, but in the last handful of years, we have seen an increase. In October, the principals came to the school committee and provided an update, a back-to-school update for the school committee and at that time, they presented to you their average class sizes, which at the primary school are running on average between 20 and 25. The highest class size is at 25 in the kindergarten classrooms. The Turkey Hill Elementary is currently running between 22 and 25. The middle school has numbers between 20 and 25 and it's a little bit deceiving because it's not truly reflective of all classes at the high school, but when you average class size at the high school, it does have the lowest average class size across the We know that we need to be able to support all of our learners, so in this area, we're looking at what are our student needs and what is our curriculum. We know that there's a shifting demographic and we're seeing a shift in student needs as well. We know that we need to be working to develop what in education is referred to as a tiered system of support and that is a tiered system of support academics but also social-emotional behavioral support. We are likely going to need to purchase some curriculum materials once we determine what model we would look to move forward with in terms of a curriculum for social-emotional learning. That will also require some professional development. We've been engaging in professional development particularly at the primary school this year to provide teachers with strategies that are effective in their classroom as a tier-one support for all students to support the social-emotional behavioral components that they're seeing with their students. Additionally, and we've talked about this too, the need for curriculum leadership in the district and perhaps other specialized professional staff, again, perhaps specialized staff to support those social-emotional behavioral needs at the primary and the elementary This is some of the data that I reported out in October relative to last spring's MCAS results. I also shared this data with the finance committee mid-March. We know that the data is indicating to us that we are not meeting the needs of all of our students. This particular slide shows you the accountability. Accountability used to be reported by the state in terms of Level 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. They've shifted the way they're reporting accountability. Schools fall into different categories now. The two largest classifications are requiring assistance or intervention and not requiring assistance or intervention. We currently, both as a district and individual schools, fall into that category of not requiring assistance or intervention. They also report how we are doing in terms of meeting our targets. The threshold there, you need to reach that 75% threshold to be deemed as meeting targets. And you can see that overall for the district, we're at 59%, so we're partially meeting targets. Turkey Hill is at 71%, very close to hitting meeting target. The middle school is at 39%, the high school at 54%, both partially meeting target. And that last column is an accountability percentile. This is a comparison between the school and similar schools structured in a similar way to our schools. You can see that the middle school and the high school fall, they just break that barrier and get up into that top third. However, you know, we're gonna keep our eye on the Turkey Hill in particular, which is now at the 44th percentile. I also shared this information with the school committee in October and the finance committee in March. Again, we did an analysis of our MCAS results and what you can see here, I just pulled some areas where our students in these different grades, in English and the next slide will be math, against different standards and types of questions where our students, either all students or our students with disability subgroup, fall below the state average by double digits. We have some work to do. So, these are your ELA numbers and you see, we have similar numbers in math. I also wanna touch on the instructional technology piece again. That is a component of the district strategic plan. We know that in education today, technology is a necessary tool for a variety of reasons. We use it to design and deliver engaging lessons, differentiate instruction to reach all learners, collect and organize and analyze data, communicate between teacher, student, and parent, support students to reach and find information independently and to be able to use that as a tool to demonstrate what they know. For us to successfully transition to teachers utilizing instructional technology in a way that is meaningful and impactful in the classroom, it's going to require some job-embedded professional development, which is why the team in December had made the recommendation of hiring a technology, an instructional technology specialist. This would not be a position that's part of the IT networking group. This would be from the educator lens. However, with an increase in the number of devices in use in our schools comes the need for technical support and server capacity, so we're gonna have to continue to monitor that need. We may see- We may see a need for increasing staffing in the IT realm as well. And again, part of the strategic plan seeks to expand opportunities for students, particularly in the athletic program and other activities. That requires additional coaches, advisors. There are transportation costs, and sometimes there are other fees associated with, particularly for athletic programs, but even for some club activities to attend or participate in competitions, oftentimes there might be a fee for entrance into a competition. So I will conclude the presentation with some words of gratitude. I want to thank my entire leadership team, most of whom are here this evening, for their thoughtful deliberations throughout the entire budget development process. They helped arrive at difficult decisions regarding reductions, but always with a focus on what was best for students. Thank you to parents, family, and community members who have attended school committee and Finance Committee meetings to learn more about the budget proposals, to advocate for funding or advocate for curricular and extracurricular opportunities for students, or just to be present as a show of support. Thank you to those who could not attend meetings but have taken the time to share thoughts and advocate for programming through emails directly to me. Your involvement is very much appreciated. I want to thank the town manager for the manner in which she collaborated with me throughout this budget process. Her focus was also student-centered. I never doubted that if additional monies became available, that she would provide some additional resources to the schools so that we could better meet the needs of the schools. Lunenburg is a caring community that has demonstrated its value for education through the commitment to two school-building projects in the last two decades. The challenge for the community is limited revenue. The limited revenue must be shared in a manner that allows all departments to fund their most highly prioritized needs. This responsibility falls to the town manager. I believe she has done her very best to meet the needs for all the departments with the FY '20 town budget that she has presented. While I will have to continue to advocate on behalf of all students for what the schools need in order to deliver a quality, modern education, I must be mindful that the schools are but one of many departments in town. In many ways, the success of the schools is dependent upon the strong working relationship with town departments. The schools rely most heavily on positive working relationships with the DPW, the Police Department, the Fire Department, and the Library. If these departments are underfunded, the schools may be negatively impacted. I must support other departments being funded to meet their priority needs as they in turn support our needs. That said, we are at a critical point moving forward. I feel an obligation to provide the students of Lunenburg with a free, quality, modern education to the very best of my ability. Our non-personnel budget lines are now so lean that we will certainly be required to reallocate resources in the personnel portion of the budget in order to meet higher priority staffing needs if the town cannot support requested increases in the future. And that concludes the presentation.
Any questions?
Well, I wanted to reiterate or tack on to superintendent's thanks to the community and the, all the individuals involved in preparing this budget proposal, especially the parents and students and the staff that have come in here and articulated very eloquently their positions and their desires and for their positions. I know it's a difficult budget. Thanks that I appreciate the fact that we're able to maintain the foreign language curriculum, also being mindful that if we don't have students in that curriculum, that may not last. So as I mentioned last meeting, the description by Mrs. Beardmore was a great commercial for getting people into a French class, so I hope that the students are paying attention and when that opportunity comes up, that they actually sign up. I am a little bit concerned about some of the reductions in the paras, considering what we've been hearing about the needs of the students, especially at the primary school. The reduced stipends for the department heads is meaning that a lot of extra work is going to be now tacked on to our principals and our leadership team. I'm concerned that they're going to burn out as a result. I am glad to see that we're seeking alternative funding for literacy coach. I think that's extremely important for the primary school. And for, you know, the positive, again, the collaborative effort between the town and the school administration working together on that was great. I did have a question though about what your perception was about the MCAS numbers where we're not meeting targets. Is there any correlation to the amount of money that we're spending on students, which is far less than our peers?
Some of the initial data that I've heard from colleagues is yes, but I can certainly dig into that and pull together some data for you so that you can see that comparison and the results that come from an increase in the per pupil expenditure.
Thank you. And then I would just say, you know, this is this year, and I feel, as you kind of alluded to, that we're kind of kicking the problem a little bit down the road, and next year is going to be a lot tougher on us to move things forward or to at least get the increase that we need to resume these things that we're cutting. We haven't resumed everything from the cuts from the Great Recession, as I understand it. So we're making more cuts, and I just, I have a hard time seeing how we're going to recover from that without citizens getting involved and helping push things through for us. So thank you again.
Thank you.
I don't have anything.
No, you don't have anything? Wendy?
It's been said, but thank you again to the leadership team and for what in my fourth budget is the clearest, best, most transparent and with greatest connection to what every change, addition, or reduction, how it is directly impacting our schools and the district as a whole, and tying it into our mission in Lunenburg Public Schools, because that's key. It was clear that that was the guiding force in creating this budget as it should be. So thank you for letting that be your guide.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. I was just going to say that reminded me that when we did the interviews for superintendent budget was one of those main topics, one of those main questions, and I think Meredith asked the question about how do you go about doing this? And we didn't take the approach of prior number plus a percent. We actually went back to the drawing board, and you challenged your leaders to come up with-
New numbers.
With numbers, well, not just new numbers, but focused numbers on the needs of the students.
Not just adding to what they asked for last year.
Yeah. Sorry.
That's okay. I just wanted to say, this is obviously my first budget season, and this year I was assigned to attend all the FinCom meetings, and that is a real eye-opener. Everybody has desperate needs everywhere. I heard them all. I sat and listened to all of the hearings, and I do appreciate that we're all trying to figure this all out together. I am very nervous about the elementary school numbers and very cognizant that there could be a need for some adjustment once the final enrollments are in for the fall.
And that won't be until August?
Right, right?
Right.
But I want to thank everybody for the job that they did working together, and I want to thank Dr. Burnham for the painstaking way that she went through everything and worked with her leadership team to get this accomplished.
They really were extraordinary in the process. I'm very grateful. Thank you all. And just to alleviate some concern relative to the primary school and the numbers, that continues to be a high priority for me. I'm going to continue to watch enrollment, not only at the primary, but at Turkey Hill and the middle school as well. Again, it's still early in the year. There may be additional retirements that come forward. There may be some cost savings there that might make some monies available to hire additional staffing back. To alleviate some concern relative to the reduction in hours for paraprofessionals, largely that was accomplished by looking at our sub-separate rooms where there are multiple paraprofessionals, reducing the time a little bit so that there's some, there's overlap in the middle of the day, but maybe a little bit less on either end of the day. Certainly, we will revisit that if need be. We will be monitoring all of it closely. Again, our commitment is to making sure that we meet the needs of the kids as they're presenting. And we've done some innovative, creative thinking and flexing to provide the best support that we can, and we will continue to do that.
The two questions I had, because people were concerned about the bubble teacher in the sixth grade, because you took it off at the Turkey Hill level. I just want to make sure people understand that there will still be another teacher, six teachers for that larger class size, that they're not going into five classrooms.
Correct.
Okay. Because from the email, I think people could not interpret that correctly. And then you said the enrichment classes for sixth and seventh were going to be bigger because of the reduction in the foreign language at the middle school level. What, do you know what the numbers would be or what they are?
Mr. Santri, do you have an estimate for the enrichment class size?
With our focus being on class sizes.
The enrichment classes are just a little bit more difficult to determine what they'll be because it depends on band and chorus, because we pull from enrichment classes for band and chorus. We have to have the numbers of kids moving from fifth grade to sixth grade that are enrolled in band and chorus, and then we schedule the rest of the students into those enrichment groups.
So band and chorus, people don't go to enrichment?
They, no, they go to enrichment, but only three times a week.
Okay.
Then they have band and chorus during those other times. So those numbers are going to look somewhere between 27 and 29.
Okay. That's pretty big.
It is pretty big.
That's a big class. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we can open the floor up to the public. If you have any questions, concerns, just come on up. Just state your name and address, okay?
Do I have to give my street number? Because I don't want the kids to know.
No, that's fine. Because they're all watching right now.
I know. Peggy Proctor, Gilchrist Street, Lunenburg, Mass. On behalf of the Foreign Language Department, we would like to thank Superintendent Burnham, the administrative team, and school committee for your hard support and hard work. We recognize that many hours were spent making very difficult decisions during what was very emotional and stressful times for many. I echo Dr. Burnham's sentiments in an email sent to parents and staff. I'm very proud of our students. Many present and past students advocated strongly for not only foreign language, but for the entire school system. I learned that recent graduates streamed the school committee meeting from UNH and UMass, to name a few, which I think is absolutely, I'm going to cry, because I wouldn't do that as a freshman. And my husband said, "Don't make jokes." We couldn't stream when I was in school. Sorry. Okay. In addition, many graduates have gone on to do community service in many countries and continue to do so. These students embody our vision of the graduate. As educators, it really doesn't get much better than that. In times of intolerance, these students should give us all hope. That being said, we have many needs that need to be met, obviously from the very eloquent presentation, and we must continue to advocate to ensure that all students, K through 12, get the education they need and deserve. I thank the superintendent for highlighting the per pupil expenditure, because I think really that's the number that the community has to hear. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Peggy. Do we have anybody else?
I'm Peter Beardmore, 282 Pleasant Street in Lunenburg. First of all, excellent presentation. Thank you. One takeaway that I took from that presentation, there was a lot of information, and I think you're right, that per pupil spending number, that's the magic number right there, and direct quote from Dr. Burnham, "The data indicates that we are not meeting the needs of all of our students." And what I didn't gather from that was a solid plan to how we're going to do that, not just in 2020, but 2021 and 2022 and beyond. I was pleased to see Mrs. Arshenbow, I arrived late at the Finance Committee meeting the other day, but I watched it on tape, your approach to the Finance Committee last week to advocate for additional funding. And I think that if the school committee is going to fulfill the advocacy role that's described in your operating principles, the committee needs to expand its view of the budgeting process from what to do with what we're given or resource allocation to also include how to get what we need, which is resource appropriation. I believe that the time for that change is not next year. I think it's now. And I want to encourage each of you to bring a budget that's needed to town meeting this year and to fight for what we need this year and not settle for what's been agreed to at this point with the town manager. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sarah Camer. I live at 304 Langcast Rav. Many people have said most everything I wanted to say, but I really am wondering, what do we have to lose by not advocating for more funding, not asking for an override of the 2.5 percent limit? Because our kids are losing big time with this budget, and across the town, I've been to Finance Committee meetings, across town, there's not enough. And so we're all fighting for the last dollar because nobody's willing to ask. I don't know how to do a two-and-a-half percent override, but I'll find out, and I hope you'll join me. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Megan Arnold. I live at 105 Hemlock Drive. I want to kind of follow on what Peter had to say about being more creative about the budget and how we are not servicing our children, because I have a daughter who's going into seventh grade, the year that kids can apply to charter schools, and a lot of her friends did, and a lot of them got in. And they are kids who would be phenomenal Lunenburg Public School students, and they're leaving. And that's going to be money that you have to pay to a charter school that we are going to lose out of this budget. So there's more money that's gone because we are not creating or giving the kids the education that they need, because they're not meeting this perpendu, average student, per student expenditure. We are, I was pointing at that, thinking that the screen is still up there. The lowered MCAS scores, right, all of those things. People, our parents are listening to that, and they are believing that you are not advocating enough for our children and that the school isn't providing the education that they need. So that budget that you see right now is actually probably less because there's going to be money that's being sent to charter schools that could be staying here if parents thought they were getting what they needed.
Brian Leighton, 66 Pleasant Street. I want to thank you for the presentation.
I want to thank you for the presentation and for what you do. Specifically, Carol Arshenbow, I watched the YouTube as well. And not only were you there, but also advocating, and the Superintendent Burnham obviously advocating for more funding. So important in your presentation too. You had mentioned that the reductions are going to be needed to come back, and we need that, the class sizes to be lowered. We need those department heads to be back because those teachers are the experts, and we need more funding. I also want to thank Mary Foyle and the LEA for bringing the Fund Our Future campaign and resolution to the school committee. I think that's so important. We need to look for funding everywhere, especially from the state who's been underfunding education. So I hope you pass the resolution, but also communicate that with the community and everybody here too. Just keep communicating about Fund Our Future and the Promise Act, and also talking about the concerns and the reductions that are affecting our students and the class sizes that are affecting our students. Thank you.
And to piggyback on that, you can all write your local congressman and any of the people who represent us at the government level, because they're the ones who have the money in their hands and the ability to give it out to the community the way that we need it in our school district and in the town in general. So write them letters. Jen Benson, Dean Tran, flood their emails, because that's how we're going to get more money.
And something has to shift. This town has been in the lowest 10% per pupil expenditure since the beginning of time, pretty much.
Since my kids have been there.
So easily, decades. So that's, so if a change will need to come from many avenues. Clearly, we have a task ahead of us, but it's going to require everyone's commitment.
Yeah. Collaboration.
Creative thinking as well. I've already started having conversations with the leadership team about ways in which we can potentially generate a little bit of revenue. It's not going to be the kind of revenue that will allow me to hire five teachers. But it also would, some of the ideas that we've been talking about would provide opportunities for enrichment for students as well. And again, we're going to wait to see what our grant monies look like mid-July. And we'll utilize those funds the best we can to provide the kind of supports that the students need. Again, my primary concern is the primary school in terms of class size. I recognize that at the middle school, some of the class sizes are going to be rather large. But I think that the kids at that age and the teachers that we have can manage a temporary swell in class sizes. Where it's really impactful in a negative way is at the early grades where students are learning how to read. That small group attention, that one-on-one attention is much, much more important in terms of the development of that skill. So while this is a recommendation to live within the monies that have been indicated are available to us from the town, we're still going to look to be creative with whatever revenues we can to address the supports that the kids need. I'm still not okay with the class sizes anywhere. And there is going to be, over the course of the next six, eight months, we will start having more high-level conversations. We will do an in-depth analysis of our programming, the sequence of our program offerings, particularly at the high school and even at the middle school. We're going to take a dive into looking at possible options for a schedule that the entire middle, high school can work with instead of two different schedules within the same building. That might afford us some flexibility to be creative in how we can reduce class sizes, provide offerings for students, et cetera.
Shared resources, I would presume.
Yep. So those conversations, while not part of the presentation tonight, have already started with the leadership team.
I think something that would help you, especially in terms of us getting more funding and things like that, is getting the community more involved with the school. I mean, look at, there's 20 people in this room and what, 1,600 kids in our school district, right? I heard one person came to meet the principal night. Right?
Yeah, correct, yes.
You know, and so there's got to be ways, you have to get, like, and I think this is partially your responsibility. I think it's the school's responsibility, PTO's responsibility, CPAC, right? There's a lot of members of this community that if you were all working together could be better at making parents more engaged in being part of this process and wanting to come to town meeting and voting for it. People don't want to go to town meeting, right? It's inconvenient, it's whatever. But you have to give them something that drives them to want to go. And getting people more invested in going to PTO night, right? I mean, that's not a hugely popular event, right? And it ideally would be if you all and all the other members of this school-based community programs could work together to get people invested, because that's how you get people to come and vote for you. That's how you get people to go to FinCom to argue for you. That's how you get people to go to town meeting to vote for your budget or whatever it is. And that's something I think that this school community as a whole is hugely lacking and would benefit, I think, every, everybody, if that was more of a communal goal instead of each individual group trying to do something little, like it being more cumulative.
Are we going, we have to vote on a budget to present to town meeting, is that correct?
That would be correct.
And what I've heard from this community here is that they want us to vote for the higher budget to present at town meeting.
Yes.
Correct? That is what they want us to present, and I'm not against that.
I'm, at the 2.5%, I was going to vote no. 3%, I can see, you know, everybody's got to make some cuts. Everybody's got to sacrifice a little bit. But I would certainly advocate for the 4.2% if we could, if we can get that.
I'm not sure any other department has made cuts. I'm, don't think that is the case.
I, I.
I think we are the only one who has had to meet cuts, correct?
I believe so.
Don't remember on the FinCom meeting.
So.
I believe so.
Brian Leighton, 66 Pleasant. I just wanted to mention that Monty Tech is asking for 3.6%.
Yes, Mr. Beardmore.
I might even be a little more talkative than usual tonight.
It's okay.
I'm glad, I'm so happy to hear the sentiment that you just expressed, Mrs. Soroka. I would encourage you to push back on the town manager. I would encourage you not to vote on a budget tonight if you don't feel comfortable with it. Put it off for a couple of weeks and go back to the town manager and say, "How can we get creative?" Here's just an idea. I had a discussion with a department head this past week about the fuel tanks that are due to be replaced at the Highway Department. That's a really difficult project to estimate the cost associated with it. And at the end of the day, that project could very easily come in at $100,000 less than is currently budgeted.
In the capital plan, yes.
Well, what if we didn't fund to the tune of the full hundred, you know, full $380,000 or whatever it is? Drop that by 100,000, put it out to bid and see what happens. And then if it, if it doesn't come in the way we want it, well, we put up one tank next year and not another. I think that, and that's just an example, and I don't, you know, all know all the intricacies of what's going on with the capital plan. I haven't sat in a single one of their meetings, so.
I am on the co-chair.
Fair enough. Okay, so my, my point is, there's got to be ways that we can push back this year to get the funding that we need for 2020. But then again, to the woman's point earlier, we got to figure out how to solve this structural deficit in 2021. And in my mind, and I would hope that the state could figure something out this year, I don't have a great deal of confidence. Unfortunately, we've not passed a general override in this town in a very, very, very long time. And it's not popular, and everybody's going to be ridiculed for promoting it, but it's the right thing to do, and we got to do it. And we need the school committee to take that leadership role. Thank you.
So what are your thoughts on that? What are your thoughts?
I really don't want to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't want to take up too much of your time. Sarah Cammer, 304 Lancaster Ave.
You're so soft spoken.
There's 100,000 in free cash going to a stabilization fund. There's another 200,000 going to a stabilization fund. There is an assistant town manager proposed. There's a recreation director proposed. All of these things I think are important. But I want everybody to be able to read.
That's from last week's meeting. Thoughts? You're the one interacts with town manager.
This is tricky. Because I anticipate, given the very lean nature of the budget that's before you at 3% and knowing that a year from now, instead of sitting here saying, "I need at least one more first grade teacher," I'm going to be saying, "I need at least one more second grade teacher." If enrollment numbers increase, and again, we don't know. I could be adding a seventh kindergarten. If I don't need to add a seventh kindergarten this year, I may need to add a seventh first grade classroom this year. So I think we can get by with the 3% budget. It's going to be tight. It's going to be a stressful year, because if anything unanticipated comes up, we're not in a position to have a lot of wiggle room to address some unanticipated need that might present itself. That said, we're going to need new positions again next year. If we're really and truly going to focus on developing solid curriculum, getting teachers up to speed with best practice and strategies that are effective in the classroom, providing tiered support in the classroom and with interventionists for children in math and literacy. If the teachers had the capacity to do that already, they would be doing it. We have a very committed faculty and staff. The paraprofessionals are phenomenal. They're very dedicated. But they don't have the most current knowledge in terms of strategies, expertise, areas of expertise to get all of our staff there. It's not going to happen with one professional development session. We are going to need to bring in people that have expertise. Now, that bringing in could come through partnering with a consultant that has that area of expertise to work with our teachers in the classroom over a multi-year implementation. Or we're talking about hiring the right kinds of folks with that kind of expertise to be coaches for our teachers in the classroom to help them transition to utilizing best practices, to how to develop an appropriate assessment to gather the right kind of data that you need to determine how your students are doing in terms of developing an understanding and developing a skill set that aligns with the expectations of the state curriculum framework, that aligns with our state assessments, that aligns with the goals of this particular body and the expectations of the community. It's not just about MCAS results, because we hope for much more than just MCAS performance that is on a high level. If we're going to be able to meet the needs of our students to have an impact on that data, no doubt about it, it's going to require an investment. Absolutely no doubt about it. I need to have folks with the right kind of expertise. And as I said, if we had that level of expertise on the staff, we would be looking at different results. And I don't blame the staff. I think, my guess is that this community has done the best they can every year in terms of a budget. And there have been years, you know, dating back to the recession in '08, '09, where there were some pretty deep cuts, I imagine. And I don't think that the school department ever fully recovered from that. We are not running an efficient operation, just in terms of operation of the organization. But we also have fallen behind in terms of our teachers being up to speed with current best practice. How do we look at data? How many of our teachers are familiar with what a data cycle is and how to structure that data cycle? What's the level of the capacity for our teachers in terms of using a reading assessment with some degree of fidelity so that you are getting reliable results? We know that oftentimes with reading assessments, sometimes there's an inherent bias that comes in to that assessment with the teacher who assesses the child. There's a lot that I need to dig into to find out what's working well, what strengths do we have in that regard? Who has the capacity and understands deeply how to work with data to inform intervention, to design intervention, to deliver intervention? I haven't been able to get to that depth, but what I can tell you is that if there were, if there were staff members that had that kind of expertise, they would have become readily apparent by now, honestly. We need to support our teachers by bringing in experts to help them raise the level of their practice to current levels of best practice. And again, it's going to take an investment.
And that kind of goes to what I said earlier about kicking the can down the road. Is, we're running lean now, and, but it's going to catch up.
I think it already has. I really think it has already caught up right now.
Well, yeah.
I don't know how we can say it's going to catch up.
But honestly, even if we went with the 4.2% increase that I proposed in December, we're still not getting everything that we need. I need to add those other positions next year, the year after. I mean, we can stagger the.
Plan for those.
We can.
Right.
We can. But, but the town would have to understand that if you're pushing for additional monies this year, it's not as if next year we'll be good with a 2.5% target budget.
That's my fear. I will be blatantly honest. It's not that we cannot, I, but what I'm saying is I, I feel like conditionally that will, that will be the assumed thought.
And that would be very incorrect.
Well, I think, you know, the prevailing thing you hear at all of our town meetings, without disrespect to any department, is tighten your belt. I mean, that's how many times those at town meetings know we hear that. That's a common phrase we hear. This is, every department would tell you their, their situation is different. Your emergency services are saving lives. I mean, everyone has priority. But at very least, we can put something forward. If it's not, if it's not voted on, it's not voted on.
Right.
But. But-
Ms. Proctor.
I asked, I'm sorry.
Yes, come on.
I know public comment's gone over, but-
No, no, we're not even in public comment. We're still in our, we're still in our budget hearings.
Oh.
Which is when you can interact with us.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, see? It's so pleasant.
I would say that, truthfully, the budget that the superintendent clearly articulated is something that I feel like will help townspeople understand because I think highlighting the level of spending per student, I think the perception is that we are all, you know, mismanaging or not handling things. And I think that's a very clear indicator, and that shared with the people at the town meeting, at least they're hearing it. Because I don't think we've really heard it. They look at a budget and say, "Oh, it's 20 million, why can't they?" And the second, my last thought on town meeting is, in the past, I've heard people say, "Why do you need 275, why are you paying 275,000 for an out-of-district placement?" And people need to understand that this is the law. We're not making this up. It's the law. And I think it's important, and I applaud you for clearly highlighting not only the process, but going forward at the town meeting, explaining very clearly what, in fact, this means. I would agree, I think it's tricky to go over the budget this year, and I don't want to pin department against department because I think moving forward as a community, we need to kind of rope it back in and come back together. So my hope is, when you clearly articulate this, that people will listen. And everybody out there, please come to town meeting because it's really important to be present there as well. Thanks.
Thank you.
And it's amazing that our out-of-district placements, that's hats off to you, Ms. Hanscom, for what you've done in the last handful of years to put, to make that difference because that's money we've been able to recoup back into, you know, tight budgets and truly saved us in a handful of years. So, thank you.
So I'd be interested in knowing, just for giggles, what the per pupil spending would be at a 4.2% budget? And I don't expect the numbers today.
Yeah, I haven't run those. You don't have them on the top of your head?
Quick, quick.
No.
And I would also be interested to know if the 4.2 budget included non-personnel adjustments, right? So the non-personnel part of the budget right now is really lean. I see not a lot of negative numbers.
There's nowhere to go.
But, right, you can't cut that anymore. So at that level, does the 4.2, did the 4.2 budget, was it at that level or was it higher? I think it was higher.
So in the development of the 4.2 budget that we presented in December, in giving the charge to the department heads and the building principals in, you know, early October, I asked them to highly scrutinize their budget lines. I asked them not to just roll figures up and add a little bit. I asked them to really deliberate and think about what do we actually purchase with this line, how much of what we actually purchased with this line I must also purchase again next year. As an example, subscriptions to databases for the library, subscriptions for our eSbid platform, Power School. There are some things that, you know, we have to continue to maintain. I asked them to come in with a budget request for what they needed. And again, basing those needs on what is going to have the greatest impact on teaching and learning. And the original budgets that were submitted, the high school in particular, I believe, Mr. Cassidy was the one that had the greatest reduction in line items, but it's also the biggest budget of the schools. So, we already came in, in December, with budgets in terms of supplies, the non-personnel part of the budget, that was, that was already very lean. And then, more recently, we've gone back and we've cut things. Not a lot. What was that total? Somewhere in the ballpark of about 30,000? Because it's just not there to cut. And next year, we aren't going to be able to cut it any more deeply, without a major impact to the tools that our teachers currently use to deliver instruction. I mean, we could stop ordering paper and save a little bit of money there, but I don't think it's reasonable to ask the teachers to now go out and buy themselves a case of paper, bring it to school in September.
Or you could ask for donations of paper.
Correct, but the quality of that paper sometimes can wreak havoc with our copy machines, so I would not advocate for that.
No, no.
And I personally would not ask a teacher to spend their money on anything.
Oh, no. I don't think they should be spending money on anything.
And we should be.
But they do.
They do, I know they do.
I know they do.
I know they do.
Hats off to them.
Oh, no, we know.
Every time I get an opportunity to donate to them, I certainly do, but they shouldn't. None of them should.
You know, like I said, I think, you know, if you're going to try to push for an override, a very wise individual said that this may not actually be the best time to move forward with that kind of a request. I'll leave that up to you. I'm new in town, so I will defer to your judgment on that. But, you know, if we, if we live within the budget at a 3% increase, it's something that we really and truly may need to think about for next year. Or we're going to have to potentially be thinking about difficult reductions in staff again, potentially having to examine increasing existing fees or re-implementing fees that had, have been more recently eliminated. And again, to the core of me, I feel that my obligation is to provide the best free public education that we can for the children of Lunenburg. That is not something that I'm comfortable with gravitating to just implementing fees for all kinds of services, because I don't want to put barriers in the way of families.
This year, we're not talking about a 2.5% override.
Well, I don't think-
This year, we're talking about presenting, yeah.
For us to have that-
Yeah, that, it's too late for that this year. That would just be presenting your 4.1%. It's 4.1.
4.2.
4.2. Good lord. To the town for, as our budget, this year, to see if we could get more funding to bring us to that level of service.
It would be an additional $233, 125.
So, so, so-
At the town meeting, write that check right now, Meg. Yeah, if you got that, if you have an extra-
I can give you 125, we can call it-
So at the town meeting, we would need to, I think we would need to look at that because we'd be needing to look at line items. Because change can happen there, but you have to be really clear in your, in moving-
In your amendments.
X to Y, vice versa. So, and it's not hugely typical there, let's be honest. I mean, it's not, you know, a shuffle from here to there that's, you know, not a-
And again, I would, I would just say that I would be somewhat reluctant to advocate that we pull funding from other departments that we truly, truly have to depend on in our day-to-day operations. I need them to have what they need to be able to run their departments effectively and efficiently so that when I call, they're ready to respond in a way that we need them to, in order to support our operation. So, I mean, I can understand a position to advocate for additional funding. I would just be reluctant to look to other department budgets and make a recommendation to pull away from another department.
And that's what I was saying, looking at line items, you know, stabilize, you know, but again, where is stabilization money? Is that, you know, another department's wiggle room?
Right, it could be, you know, the OPEB stabilization fund.
Right. So, all I'm saying is if we were going to present something, we would need to be super clear where we were asking it to come from.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
And I get it, my taxes have been, gone up 30% since I've been here, at least.
Taxpayers have spoken loud and clear about that. There's no question.
So, trying to get another half a percent or a percent, that might be a hard sell. But we have, we would have time to advocate and educate.
Well, that's my whole, I don't even know that I would be asking to grab money to move here. I would just want superintendent to present the budget so that the townspeople who are not sitting here today get her clear presentation in front of town meeting to see what we're lacking, so that next year, they may consider a different percentage for us.
Is the, I'm trying, the school committee budget is part of the overall town budget that the town manager makes presentation at town meeting, correct?
Yes.
I don't believe the superintendent has their own-
No, superintendent Combs always stood up there. Oh, yeah, she did.
For, presented the budget?
Presented the school part of the budget, yes.
Okay. I don't remember that, but-
Correct?
Because she did, yes.
She always did.
Yes.
So, maybe go through these slides.
Yes, and that's, that is what I would, I think would be a good idea. It would be eye-opening for some people in town. You can come up now, Cindy.
Cindy DuCantis, 90, Autumn Road. I understand what you're saying, and I totally agree with not robbing Peter to pay Paul. I mean, it's really not right. They will expect at town meeting that if you want more money, to tell them where it needs to come from. However, the bottom line is, the townspeople need to know that our per pupil expenditure is so low that we're not meeting the needs of kids. When you have 25 kids in front of you in a first and second grade classroom and you're trying to teach them reading, it doesn't work. Try and conference in writing with 25 kids. It takes you a week to get through that. Well, that's not for the kids. How do you improve reading and MCAS scores when they're conferenced once a week? It's been several years since I've been out of the schools, but I can tell you, 25 kids in a classroom at primary school level, even at a middle school level, 29 kids, is not what Lunenburg wants with their kids. It isn't. They don't move here for the highway department, for, well, maybe for the good roads, but we paid for them.
It's great rock.
Yeah. But they move here for the, for the schools. They always have. I don't know whether the town manager actually realizes that, that people move here for the schools. You have to fund the schools appropriately. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I can speak with some degree of authority that Mrs. DuCantis was an excellent teacher at TC Cassio's elementary school. I want to, I want to encourage you to vote on the path that you discussed about passing or recommending and bringing to town meeting a 4.2% budget increase. And I think that that will have a very loud effect if you do that tonight, and will give the town something very serious to consider between now and the first Saturday in May. And it will also force a function, which I don't think has been anticipated until tonight, which is the superintendent will need to go back to the town manager and say, "There might be a fight on town meeting floor over the budget," which is not something that we've had in a very long time. And I can assure the town manager that she does not want Peter Beardmore messing with the budget and making amendment recommendations on a line-per-line basis on her budget. It's not going to be good for anybody. I'd prefer the professionals figure this out and get creative and figure out where we propose to move money from one side to the other. And I think we have the time to do that if the school committee speaks loudly and in a uniform and unified way that this is what we want and this is what we're going to go and get. Thank you.
Mr. Mack.
I swear I wasn't planning on speaking tonight.
Be sure.
Mike Mackin, 26, Cortland Circle. I have a procedural recommendation that may be helpful in figuring a way forward. I think, I commend the pushback that the school committee is showing tonight. I really believe that it's wonderful, and I applaud you. But as a realistic approach to how we go about getting support, this may be a difficult path forward. And what I may recommend for you, and of course, you can take whatever action you will, that you table vote on the, on the budget with the instructions that the superintendent go back to discuss the budget with the town manager. We may not get 4.2%, but we would certainly get, you know, I would prioritize things like, you know, the teacher, the teacher that was being eliminated. There's other academic supports that we could look at that are not in the budget, greenhouse. I mean, these are, these are things that I think are easily accomplished with not, not necessarily the full 4.2, but could be achieved through the negotiation. I applaud the desire to push back, I absolutely do. As a matter of getting what we need, I'm not certain that it would be successful.
Oh, I agree.
Agreed.
Agreed, yeah, absolutely.
So, thank you.
And be very time-consuming during town meeting.
Yes, yes. Making budget at town meeting is probably not a very good idea, having seen it done and been quite disastrous in some cases. So, anyway, that's my two cents. Thank you for listening.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thoughts?
I have, I don't have any really wonderful suggestions, but going forward, but I know that throughout this whole process, and this is the first time I've done this process, I'm like, when is it our turn to say? When do we get to say that this isn't enough money? There must be a spot, and I thought it was FinCon, but apparently that wasn't the spot. So, I don't, I'm too new at this.
FinCon thinks it's the town meeting.
But, I mean, and they're wonderful, and they do a great job listening, and they're very inviting, and they know, it's not them, but apparently that was not the arena. Every time I've heard the question asked, "When can we look at the budget more closely or when can we change things?", the only thing I ever hear is that town meeting, and that's always disastrous. So, my thought moving forward was, over this next few months, I was going to try and figure out how this really works, because I've been very frustrated that there doesn't seem to be an avenue. I, after going to FinCon as much as I have, I know you can't steal from one to get to the other. That's, that's not the right approach, you know? And I know every time somebody brings something up at town meeting, that's what you're asked to do. Where is this coming from? So, the approach may be, this needs to be presented. People need to know we're not happy with this. This is not good. And then, maybe to try and work it out ahead of time, because anything that isn't worked out ahead of time doesn't seem to go well. I don't know. That's just my thoughts. I just don't know where to say, "This is not a good idea."
Well, you're saying it right now, Carol.
I am saying it right now.
So, I guess my thought is, if we ask the superintendent, if we, if we put forward a motion and ask, table tonight and ask for another meeting with, perhaps, I don't know whether it's to see if we can, I'm not sure the 4.2 is feasible, as Mr. Mackin said as well, but to go back with some targeted, these are absolutely essential. Would there be a consideration, would there be a consideration?
Are you thinking like a particular position or a couple of positions?
Yes, so Dr. Burnham working, you know, working with the leadership team to say, realistically, knowing everyone's working under tight budgets, could we, could we- realistically, knowing everyone's working under tight budgets, could we, could we, what could we or should we ask for? And, and have that meeting, because there's nothing to lose. It's clear this doesn't meet our needs in any way, and if we're that far in the hole next year, as you pointed out, we're, we're, we're just going to get deeper. And those on our, those sitting in this room who lived through it a handful of years ago know that you get yourself three or four years deep into that, and it's, and it's a world full of fees, and ju- just to not even get to level service still.
So, I would take a motion to table.
Was Wendy just requesting?
Yes. Wendy, whatever you just said. That's your motion?
I make a motion to table our vote on the FY '20 budget tonight and
Charge.
And charge the superintendent with meeting, with her leadership team and requesting meeting with the town manager for further discussion regarding FY '20 budget.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Do we have any other comments in regard to the budget? Because then we're just going to move on to our regular meeting now. So, if you want to stay, feel free to stay. But if you don't, now's the time to depart. Thank you to the leadership team for coming.
Yes, thank you.
We appreciate your support.
You'll be putting your thinking caps back on.
Thank you to all the parents, to staff. And, well, I haven't seen any of those. I'm just going to wait till they're on. So, today was a paraprofessional appreciation day at the schools, so I have a little proclamation to read, and it says, whereas paraprofessionals play a vital role in the successful operation of our school district, and whereas the job performance of the paraprofessionals are essential to the education of our children, and whereas the dedicated and valuable contributions of all the fine people who fill these important positions are integral to the successful daily operation of our public schools, and whereas the members of the Lunenburg School Committee recognizes the paraprofessionals' continued contributions to the efficient operation of the Lunenburg Public School District, and now therefore be it resolved that the Lunenburg School Committee proclaims April 3, 2019 to be Paraprofessional Appreciation Day, and be it further resolved that the Lunenburg School Committee strongly encourages all members of our community to join with it in personally expression, expressing appreciation to our paraprofessionals for their dedication and devotion to their work. Adopted the third day of April 2019. So, we thank all of our paraprofessionals.
For the phenomenal work that they do, every day.
Every day. And so, now we're coming to the public comment portion of our agenda. That's just agenda items only. Does anybody have public comment? No. Okay. We have warrants on, and line item, any line items?
We do have line items.
Okay, and warrants on the table to approve and sign, line item transfer.
So, we have three line item transfer requests this evening. One from Ms. Delonda, requesting to transfer $7,000 from the maintenance of building supply line to the maintenance of building contract line. This request will ensure that sufficient funds are available for contracted building maintenance for the remainder of the year, sufficient funds are available in the maintenance of building supply to cover anticipated costs for the rest of the year. A second line item transfer request from Ms. Delonda would move a total of 700, 200, $7,225, 4,754 of that from the electricity line, and $2,471 from the maintenance of building supply line, and that total of $7,225 would be transferred to the maintenance of grounds contract, which would put that amount into that line. These moves will fund ground service contract for the athletic field maintenance for this fiscal year. Ms. Delonda indicates that sufficient funds remain in the maintenance of building supply and electricity to meet the department needs. And the third line item transfer request comes from Turkey Hill Elementary School. The request is to transfer $342 from the special ed instructional materials line to reading supplies. The transfer will support the purchase of narrative writing guides for grade four, connected to the empowering writers curriculum and professional development that has gone on this year. I would approve, or recommend that you approve all, all three.
Any questions?
I recall something about the grounds line being moved at some other point. Do you?
Ms. Delonda's available, right there.
I don't remember if it was something to or from, but I, I'm getting a deja vu kind of thing.
I remember Ms. Delonda coming, but I don't remember what line items.
Yeah, we haven't transferred any money into that budget line, the grounds contract line. We funded it to around 2,500 for the year, and starting about, oh, 2016, when we've got all the new athletic fields, we started using contract maintenance to take care of the fields, just, just for the athletic fields. The rest of the grounds around it are maintained by the school's maintenance staff. And so, we're just looking, we're trying to put money into that line, just to fund the, the contract from now until end of June. And then there'll be a second contract that we'll pick up from July 1 through the end of the fall.
Okay, so the contract runs July to?
It runs from April to November, but we split fiscal years, so we do one purchase order this year, and then we do a second one from the following fiscal year.
Because it's when they use those fields, correct?
Yes, it's, yeah.
I was just curious, because a contract is a contract, we didn't know that we needed the money earlier.
We, I think we were anticipating trying to fund this out of, out of the school facilities, use a revolving account, and we just, there's just not enough funds to cover it in there.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I'll take a motion to approve the line item transfers as approved, as a, you can do.
I can make a motion to approve the line item transfers as presented.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So then we have meeting minutes to approve from March 20, 2019. Did you all take a look at those?
Yes.
I'll move to accept the regular session meeting minutes from March 20, 2019.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we already had the student reps report, so the new business is, oh, you have a report. Did I stu-, oh, I skipped it. Look at that. I usually skip students. Well, I'm, you had a whole report, that's why.
That's right. So, just a few things. The last day of school, currently the last day of school will be Thursday, June 13 for the Middle High School and Turkey Hill, and it will be on Friday, June 14 for the primary school. As you recall, we did have to close just the primary school due to a water main break in early March. Both June 13 and 14 will be half-days for the primary school. This, of course, is subject to change should we have any additional school cancellations, like we almost might have had today based on that forecast yesterday.
I didn't even, I was so happy that was not.
Regarding the primary school principal search, an announcement went out that Ms. Christina Gertan has been appointed as the principal for the Lunenburg Primary School. Ms. Gertan comes to the position with more than 20 years of experience as an assistant principal with the Worcester Public Schools. She's spent her career working in the Worcester Public Schools, beginning as a teacher in the Head Start program, and then she transitioned into teaching positions in grades K through 3. She holds a bachelor's degree in early childhood education from Worcester State College, and a master of counseling in psychology for, from Anna Maria College. That would be a, a great benefit to us at the primary school. We are planning to host a meet and greet for Ms. Gertan on April 24 at 6:15 PM at the Middle High School.
That's right before our next meeting.
Correct. We would invite any parents, staff, or community members to come welcome Ms. Gertan to Lunenburg. She'll be introduced to the community at the school committee meeting, which follows the meet and greet. We will be involved in some department of elementary and secondary education audits next week. Let's see, there'll be an audit in the special services office. The first audit will be a monitoring visit where they audit the compliance with all of our title grants, that's Title I, 2A, and, and 4A. The other audit will be the tiered focused monitoring, and the department is looking at areas of special education and civil rights to be sure that we are in compliance with both state and federal regulations. There are a handful of community events coming up. The 2018 Red Sox World Series trophies coming to the Eagle House.
Sunday.
Sunday, from 2:30 to 4:30. Admission is $5 per family, and all benefit, all proceeds benefit the Eagle House supporters. The Boys and Girls Club is hosting Are You Smarter Than Our 6th Graders on April 12 at the Middle High School at 7 o'clock. Admission is free, but donations are welcome. And Roar will be presenting Kate Duffy Recovery Conversations, A Bridge Between Me and You, 10 Principles for Family Recovery on April 30 at the Middle High School from 6:30 to 8 PM.
You forgot the PTO, Parents Night Out is on set today.
Well, I thought we were going to have the PTO update, yes?
Well, that's a long time.
I deliberately left that off.
So now, our first new business item is Fund Our Future Resolution. Did you all look at the draft example? And did you see the email?
From Dorothy Presser. Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Feedback.
Sorry, the wind is distracting.
Well, it's distracting on the floor.
I was wondering what that was?
Yes.
The creaking of the floor. I feel like we're going to fall in.
Feedback, I, I guess the only thing that I had was who we would be sending this to, and it's a, it doesn't seem like it's holding any weight, other than, you know, which, I'm thinking maybe contacting our state senator, our state representatives, Mr. Hay and Dean Tran.
Dean Tran.
Dean Tran and Jennifer Benson would make
More of a difference.
More sense as individuals.
I believe that the representatives were supposed to be contacting us to see if we were on board with their intent, but I haven't heard. That was, that was the Pittsburgh State one, sort of, kind of, okay.
I haven't, I haven't heard.
As, as a point of note, the Mass Association of School Committees has not
Correct.
Taken a formal stand.
No formal stance. And they didn't say that all school committees were doing this at all.
Right. I, from a symbolic perspective, I don't have a problem authorizing a resolution, I would obviously
Drafted.
I, well, I would question using a dollar amount, because
Well, that's not accurate.
That dollar amount would be nothing like that here.
No, that isn't even accurate. That, there's not, they're not getting $12 million.
Because we don't know what, what the eventual source of funding could be. I mean, we've got the, there's, what, three different bills, the Promise Act and a few others, off my head. But each one of them, the calculations would be different, and then
Right.
You know, I think what we can do is say, based on what we've, we've seen, we're, we're looking at a $2.3 million shortfall between what your current funding is and what we're actually spending. And that the, and fixing this would help us close that gap. I don't know that we need to put a dollar on saying fixing it will get us, you know, $9 million more. I don't, whatever the number is. Right?
Yeah.
Pretty far, pretty far south of that.
Yeah, but there's a clear, clear gap between what we actually spend and what we're funded for.
Correct.
Correct. So, I would think symbolically, if we could
Craft one that's different than this one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It, it doesn't hurt.
Oh, could we do this part of our workshop?
Yeah, I was just going to ask that.
Next week, we have a workshop. We could add this to the agenda.
Yep.
Yes.
That would be fine.
Okay. So, that's what we will do.
Works method.
Yep.
That sounds good.
Okay. And then we'll bring it to the next meeting.
So, this is under action, so do we need to
Our action is
Take a vote to move it to the
Yes, yes. I will take a motion.
All right, so I'll move that we, we table this for the workshop.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. The food truck pilot. Food truck pilot with the snack shack out of service. We have come to a good alternative. What is it?
So, as we're currently only allowing resale of prepackaged food and beverages through the snack shack, I'm proposing a food truck pilot for the spring athletic season. Under the proposal, boosters would be allowed to secure one, one food truck to be on school premises, a location to be determined, for special games, not every game. Examples of special games might include the cancer awareness nights or senior games. Boosters would have to submit their request in writing to the athletic director for his approval, and then the athletic director would have to submit that request to the superintendent for final approval. Boosters should submit their request at least two weeks prior to the event in order to allow time for the approval process to be completed. If we find that this pilot is successful, we could potentially adopt this model as a standing practice moving forward, and we probably would have to determine whether or not policy needed to be adjusted to reflect this, this plan.
Just for informational purposes, the field hockey team did use a food truck last year for their cancer awareness game, and it was more to feed the crowd than to raise any funds for themselves. It was just a source of warm food as opposed to chips and candy and soda. It was a huge success. People really enjoyed it. The only problem was that it was up behind. It came, the truck itself came up and passed the snack shack and past the field house and went up to the back, and it has a generator, it had a generator, they have generators, and it was very loud. So, you couldn't hear some of the announcements made during the game. So, the location would have to be a little bit better and a little bit further away than where they make announcements. But it was well-received by the people who attended the game, so.
And just to restate the obvious, the snack shack is not in compliance with health regulations, and we have no funds to get it in compliance.
Correct.
So, the option for food is
Is very limited, yes.
Prepackaged or the food truck?
And the food truck itself would be responsible for maintaining their certifications.
And just, the lacrosse booster club did vote not to open the snack shack this year at all, because it was more work to get the donations of prepackaged items, and, and it just wasn't worth, worth people's time. So, there'll be nothing at any of the games except for if there's a food truck there for any of the special games.
So
And there are nine night games.
They only be limiting it to one food truck, not
One food truck.
One night.
Well, it would make sense, you want that vendor to be successful.
Right.
If, if you have, first of all, the work in securing multiple for, for many games is, is in and of itself a lot of work for, for a booster club, but, you know, yeah.
So there'll be nothing at any of the games except for if there's a food truck there for any of the special games.
So.
And there are nine night games.
They only be limiting it to one food truck, not?
One food truck.
One night.
Well, it would make sense, you want that vendor to be successful.
Right.
If you have, first of all, the work in securing multiple for, for many games is, in and of itself, a lot of work for, for a booster club, but, you know, yeah, you want whoever's coming to feel it was worth their time.
Right. And it's usually, in the spring, it's maybe a three-hour window.
Right.
Because the games are timed, they don't run very long. Three, maybe three and a half.
Well, and I would make a motion to approve the pilot as described by the superintendent.
I can second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Oh, first reading of policies 1202, 1303.3, and 3505. Wait, I will find the titles for the audience that's not here with us to see them. 1303 is fundraising in the schools, and 3505 is use of school-owned materials, equipment, or space. And 1202 is regulations governing, governing the use of school facilities. All of these can be found online, correct?
Correct, and we have copies available.
And the copies are available, and the red lines are on there?
Correct.
Online, so you can see where the changes are being made, if you want to look at the changes. This is our first reading, we have three readings, where we wait for public feedback, and we'll hear if we have public feedback on these at the next meeting.
So just to be clear, district website under the school committee tab?
Policies. Yes, so.
But under, under the school committee tab?
Correct. Yep.
It wouldn't be a policy without my asking questions.
Yes, I know.
On policy 1202, regulations governing the use of school facilities.
Yep.
Under conditions of, of use of facilities, you, we have, use of tobacco or nicotine products, alcohol, marijuana, or any other listed substance are prohibited. Does that include vaping?
Yes, that's why we included the nicotine.
Okay, so, well, but vapes are not just nicotine.
Now, some of them might have marijuana.
And that's why we input marijuana in there, too.
Well, I.
Yeah.
Just wanted to make sure that was, that was part of that.
Yep.
And then on number 12, we're talking about the shoes that you can wear in the gym. It just seems clunky that, I don't know why we don't simplify it and say, soft-soled white shoes, or white-soled soft shoes.
Which number is that?
Number 12.
Because some of them don't have weight, and they're.
Well, you don't want dark shoes on the gym floor, right?
The non-marking-out soles.
Mister, can Mister, can our athletic director speak to that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Come on over, James.
So what, what this reads is, in all cases where the gymnasiums are used for athletic purposes, participants are required to wear athletic shoes. That's old policy. Now, what we're adding here is cleats/turf shoes are not permitted on the track. Participants must not put cleats or turf shoes on until participants are on the turf field. So, I guess the, there's two things. The cleats and turf shoes are not part of the gymnasium, so why would it be under this number?
The shoes, it was just the shoes, because we were addressing shoes.
Well, no, it says in all cases where gymnasiums are used for athletic purposes.
Okay, so he wants that under.
Well, just as, as a, well, how's everybody going?
Okay.
Start off there. In the gymnasium, there are, there never should be any cleats or turf shoes or anything like that worn. With basketball courts themselves, there would, you pretty much gotta know that, so. But a lot of times in the wintertime, and I've seen it since I coached, played, and all the way through even being an athletic director, youth organizations and even my high school student athletes, they'll come in, and you know as well as I do that the wintertime, when it snows or there's ice, we put salt and sand on the ground. If you do not bring a change of shoes into, with you, that salt and sand gets all over the floor and it wears it down a lot faster. You can, if you were to go and look in the, in the gymnasium now, you can already see spots where it's worn a lot faster than what it should be, and your school is two, three years old.
Two.
So those things are preventive, and I understand with the, the athletic footwear piece, you know, a sneaker, so if you're, if you were to go in with dress shoes that have a black sole, as soon as you get stuck, it's gonna make the scuff marks, and I know the custodians, they do the best they can with, you know, there's usually a tennis ball on like a stick, and it, they, you know, can get it off, or there's a whole bunch of different ways that I've seen them do it, but again, you're, those shoes are not meant for a basketball court.
Right.
As far as the turf track that just got replaced, anything that's a cleat is, it's there, it's the, the cleat is, it's a cleat, it's designed to grip into either the turf or the grass. It's not, the track surface is not meant for that. You can see now, at the beginning of the track, the entrance, like the roadway entrance where you can enter the track and field area, there is a weighted, in a sense, it's like a carpet, that gets draped over the, the track for kids, for the high school kids that have a lacrosse game or soccer game, football game, et cetera, whatever the case may be. But when that is not there, either my kids have to, the athletes have to either roll that out, or if it's a weekend and we're not around, I haven't, I haven't seen any of the youth organizations put that out. This past fall, I just left it over the track to encourage people to walk that way, because again, you're using footwear that's not designed for that surface, so it's gonna wear it down a lot faster.
And we.
And even create.
And we did have damage this year.
And there was, yeah, I did send Dr. Burnham pictures of, basically, if you, you get stuck and you're trying to get it out, you don't usually, kids tend, usually don't do that gently. So it creates divots and cracks and things like that. So a surface that just got replaced last spring, there's already things popping up.
Do we have any signage or reminders for that kind of thing, for people who might not be watching tonight?
At the moment, no. That is something that I, I've been working with Mr. Londa and, and the superintendent of trying to figure out the proper wording and what to put, I mean, if you really wanna put everything on the sign, the sign would probably be the size of this wall.
Right. Clearly, it could probably be part of the.
But no, there is, correct, there is.
Information package for all the athletes, but some people might go to the field who aren't necessarily part of one of those athletic groups.
Correct.
Or just visiting the field that might not.
Correct, and there, and there are, and there are people that, that use the lovely facility, like, you know, walking around the track when there, when there's not athletic events going on, and I encourage the more people to do that, because they need, they should enjoy the beautiful facility that you guys have. But there should be some type of signage that states where they should be walking, or what they should be wearing when doing that, or not to have Gatorade on the, on the turf surface, because it can stain it and make it sticky, and there's a whole bunch of fun little things. But I know that's been a process, and, and Dr. Burnham and, and the school committee chair and vice chair have, have reached out and asked me for feedback and what needs to be, what I suggest should be included in that. So if there's anything that I can do to help, so that the wording is clear or more defined, please let me know, I have no problem whatsoever.
My gym has a two-shoe policy in the winter as well.
So, I mean, even if someone has a question, they could always call me and ask and say, "Mr. Burnham, is this okay to wear?", I'll be more than happy to tell them, yes, no, maybe. Sometimes wear a pair of sandals and then put the one on, you get on the turf, that's.
No, I mean, I, I get what we're trying to say here, I'm just questioning the placement.
The second part.
Because the first part talks about gymnasium, the second part talks about when you're on the turf.
You're wondering if it should be a separate number.
I, yes, I would think that.
Okay.
But I'd hate to, you know, make you go back and then.
Well, it's just a number, it's not, it's, the word, the language is fine.
Not changing content, just the number.
It's just, right, so I think that would be fine.
Yeah.
Then, okay.
Okay?
Everything else, I didn't have any.
Oh, okay.
I mean, it was just, I guess, little questions.
Okay. Carol, did you have something?
I had something on.
Thanks, James.
3505.
Thank you.
I was a little confused at the last one, where it says non-school-owned materials and equipment, and then it reads school material and equipment purchased for the support of school programs. Shouldn't that be non-school material?
Yes.
Or am I not reading it correctly? Do I not understand? Wouldn't be the first time.
Yeah, I think.
No, I don't know, because it's supporting school programs, but it's not purchased by the school.
So why is it school material?
Right. Well.
The paragraph under that.
Yeah, it says school material and equipment.
School material and equipment purchased for the support of school programs may be temporarily stored on school grounds if space permits, but the heading is non-school-owned materials. So this is school material that's not owned by the school?
Correct.
That's why I'm confused.
So it's.
So can you give me an example?
It may be owned by a booster group.
So.
But it's supporting.
But it's still called school material even though it's owned by somebody else?
It's supporting.
That's what's confusing me.
It's supporting, so it's used sometimes to support, I was thinking about the soccer goals as well, that we had.
Right, see, the Booster Club bought the soccer goals, or the, actually, wasn't it LISA?
It's LISA.
LISA bought the soccer goals, but we utilize them on our fields.
Okay.
Okay, so it's that type of thing, so it was.
In return for storage?
Yes.
In return for storage?
Were allowed use of them.
Were allowed use of it, okay, I understand. I just didn't understand it.
Right, and that's.
Correct.
Right.
Okay.
To Carol's point, it's not school material.
Yeah, I know.
Material.
But it's stuff owned by somebody else, and that's what was confusing me.
Okay, so.
I don't know, I don't have a suggestion, I'm just saying.
Separate sentence?
The first word of school doesn't make sense.
So you want it non.
Maybe just material and equipment purchased for the support.
Right.
So without that word, school?
Okay.
Good catch.
So does that, that doesn't have to go back just for one word, or?
I don't know.
Well, if we're announcing tonight that it's up, if it's changed tomorrow, that would really be the first chance for folks to take a look at it, and we have three readings on it.
Correct, yeah, okay.
So I think for something.
It's, it's not.
It's not a change in content.
It's just a clarification.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wording's more clear.
Okay.
I have a question or clarifying comment for the 1303, the crowdfunding.
Yep, that's online, the online, like, GoFundMe.
Right, right, right. So that's going with the things like Donors Choose, the GoFundMe accounts, using Facebook to collect donations, that sort of thing. Has the LEA weighed in on that? Are there teachers that participate in that also? Does this?
So it actually, if teachers are doing it, it actually opens them up to an ethics violation, because they're not supposed to accept donations or gifts in excess of $50.
Mm-hmm.
So they, they really should not be.
Could, could they have, could they have done it on behalf of the school, and it becomes a school?
Our advice from legal counsel was to steer clear of that practice.
Schools can't fundraiser for themselves either, which is why the PTO supports schools.
Okay, and then my other question, maybe Jim would know, the athletic clubs and groups like that, are they using crowdfunding?
Nope.
Okay, so it wouldn't impact them either?
Nope.
Crow, crowdfunding?
It's like GoFundMe pages.
GoFundMe, Donors Choose.
Teachers have one, too, they, where they want stuff for their classrooms.
Yeah.
I've seen that on Facebook.
Mm-hmm.
Not, but I haven't seen our teachers, I've seen other teachers.
Okay.
So I'll make the motion to waive first reading?
Yes, please.
For policies 1202, which I don't remember the name of.
Which one is that?
Actually, I'm looking at 1303, fundraising in the schools, 1202, regulations governing the use of school facilities, and 3505, use of school-owned materials, equipment, or space.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Okay. Oh, now we're on to spring sports participation numbers. Mr. Banil, athletic director.
Back up.
Back up, please.
Hello, again.
Hello, again.
I first want to apologize of the, the first go-around of what I sent. I added a ghost team.
Oh, I saw that. I did. Did you see that?
So it was, I guess it was wishful thinking on my part. So I do apologize, and I.
They have the revised number.
They do have the revised one.
No, we do have the new updated.
Awesome. So I do, when I continue my apology in saying that I, I wasn't able to get you the current numbers, which I do have for the most part off the top of my head, with middle school co-ed track, right now they're at 62 participants in that. The unified track program is currently at 19 participants.
Oh, went up.
I believe it was 13.
Yeah, it went up on both.
On the one that I sent you.
Yep.
And Boys Lacrosse added another player.
Oh, they did?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, I heard that, okay.
So that's where.
A twin.
The numbers stand.
Okay.
As you can see that the percentages, based on that piece of paper, were close to 41% at the high school level in athletic participation, which again, I think is great.
Phenomenal.
It is.
And then if you throw the middle school students in there, where there's over almost 260 kids participated in after-school sports this spring, and that's just, that's phenomenal.
It is.
In my opinion, anyways.
Yeah, I think it's great.
Yep, really good numbers participating.
Yeah, what are we gonna do with grade 12 boys lacrosse?
I, yeah, and looking at the, those numbers, and projecting for the future, since that seems to be a theme tonight.
Yeah.
That.
Let's talk.
I did speak to the boys lacrosse coach, and prior to me arriving here in years past, I, he just said there was an eighth-grade waiver that had been approved in the past for, to allow eighth graders to participate on the lacrosse team, and we're probably gonna have to go down that road.
Next year.
Next year.
Yeah.
I can tell you that this year, Tingsborough, they had requested an eighth-grade waiver for their boys lacrosse program. Even with that, they had sent auto request for an emergency waiver to add on seventh graders.
Oh, my goodness.
Just to stay in their program.
Is that for the, they're just their JV?
Just their JV team, yes. Also, this year, a disturbing trend with some of the schools that we are participating against, they've, a number of them had to cancel their JV programs. For example, North Middle Socks Regional will not have a boys JV lacrosse program this year. Fitchburg, Narragansett, St. Bernards, and there's another school that do not have enough players for JV baseball.
Oh, my.
There is another school that, Fitchburg also does not have enough for JV boys lacrosse as well. So there's a lot of schools that are around us that are unable to sustain some teams, which is unfortunate for them and our, our kids as well. But having that information and with their athletic directors reaching out, I've had, been able to take some teams that we were playing that, they were also playing one of those schools that had to have their program canceled that we have now, like, so we'll have a JV game against, like, Air Shirley three times instead of two.
Right.
Just so.
They get to play.
They get to play.
Yeah.
But it, it seems like more and more of a trend that those seventh and eighth-grade waivers are, are gonna come into play as a bigger factor, not just, you know, for us, but other schools as well. And I don't, I have no explanation or rhyme or reason as to why that's happening.
You're probably gonna need it for girls at some point, too.
Yeah.
Because the grade 11 team, like.
Yeah, there's some.
There are bubbles.
Yeah, you can see like some of the numbers that just stand out, like some of the classes are very, like, there's just some classes that are very heavy with certain athletes.
I guess.
So when you look at that, you're like, whoa, what's going on? I mean, especially with the Boys Lacrosse, you have 14 or 15 seniors and you have two freshmen.
Yeah, that was, I was shocked that there were two freshmen.
It's, you know, usually you have, you would like to see that at least like somewhat of a, a stable trend. I mean, I don't expect to replace 15 with 15 every year, but if, if that number was at eight and then you get like eight again next year, then you're, you're kind of having a good flow coming in, but we're going with hills and valleys right now for some reason.
Okay.
Did you get a haircut by the way? I'm just gonna.
Yeah, it was today. I got it done. Do you like it? Yeah.
I'll, I'll, I noticed that when I came in. I'm like, Heather looks like she got a haircut.
Thanks, James. But does anybody have any more questions?
Jim, your haircut looks great too. I did notice that from the other night. We just, we just saw each other last night, so. Anyone else get a haircut? I'll ask that too.
Do you have any questions for James? Anybody?
No.
No?
I think the participation is good.
Yeah, it is. And even more so, you know, one of my favorite sports, the Unified Sports, that, that participation, the numbers there are huge. If any of you as a school community member get an opportunity to come to a Unified Event, I strongly suggest that, that you do because your face is going to hurt from smiling so much. You know, it's just, I feel very blessed to be able to offer a program like that and with hopefully basketball in the, in the fall, you know, just to have the opportunity to see all kids of every age and ability participate. Like I said, your face is going to hurt at the end of the events because you're going to, this smile is not going to go away.
Thanks.
Thank you.
That's it? Cool.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, you have the extended day summer program for us?
Correct. This recommendation comes through the Director of our Extended Day Program. In anticipation of the summer Extended Day Program approaching, we would like the approval to begin the summer program the first full week in July, ending two weeks prior to the school start in August. The reason for this recommended change is to achieve some consistency going forward, to let parents have a predictable schedule to plan around. So this is a recommendation not just for specific dates for this summer program.
Going forward.
Going forward that we always start the program the first week in July.
Full week.
The first full week and always end two weeks prior to the start of school.
Okay.
And that, that makes it a six week program, is it?
Roughly.
Yeah, it should be.
And that gives her the ability to staff properly.
Correct.
Based on vacation schedules.
Right, because you know when it's going to start. You don't have to wait for an approval date or an approved date.
Right.
For the program.
Yeah. I'll take a motion.
Oh, this is an action.
This is an action item.
Motion to approve the extended day.
Oh, it should be.
Summer program days and weeks as outlined.
I'll second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Old business, school choice students relocating in 10th, 11th and 12th grade.
So actually that's an error.
Okay.
In the agenda, it should just be students relocating.
Students, not school choice students.
10th, 11th and 12th grade. The committee in the past has voted to allow students who relocate, Lunenburg residents in Lunenburg schools, who relocate while they are in grades 10, 11 and 12, that they remain students at the high school through graduation, even if they move out of town.
They have to provide their own transportation.
Correct. So it's up for discussion as to whether or not you would agree that if a current 10th, 11th or 12th grader family were to relocate out of town, that they might remain at the high school through graduation.
Do we know how many students this typically is? Are we talking like two or three or are we talking a dozen?
No, I think we're, we're talking probably two or three.
That was my question.
I think for students, it's just a really kind and friendly thing to do. That's a tough time to move when you're in the middle of a high school experience. So if they can, make the opportunity for them to stay then.
Which is why we say 10th, 11th and 12th, not freshman year, because in freshman year, it's a little bit easier to transition.
But once, once you've really established yourself with the, the graduation requirements and the friends and the, yeah, all the class things that you do, yeah.
And now if they want to stay, they can go in the choice lottery in the freshman class to see if they could stay.
That's true.
So for this, do we need a motion?
Mm-hmm. Yes, we need a motion.
You'll pick your own question.
You have more questions, Carol?
Does, I know there were rules about school choice. Allowing these kids to stay, that doesn't follow up the school choice law? No? Okay. That was my question.
I guess following on that, the question of, of funding for those students comes from where?
Nowhere.
They would be reported as attending, so therefore, based on the data that's reported, I would imagine that the funds that are attached per pupil from the state would remain with us, but I'd look for Mr. Cassidy to verify.
Yeah. We all tied in. From the state, okay.
Essentially, as of the October 1st reporting, the money from the state goes to wherever that student is enrolled as of October 1st. Student unenrolls October 2nd and goes elsewhere, the new school does not receive that money. It stays with where, wherever the child was reported as enrolled as of October 1st.
I'll make a motion to approve that students relocating while in 10th, 11th or 12th grade still have the choice to remain at Lunenburg if they desire.
Lunenburg resident students.
Lunenburg resident students, thank you.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. School bus transportation cost comparison. Is that Mr. Cassidy?
So I'd invite Mr. Cassidy up. I know that Mr. Levek had had some questions relative to the transportation bid that was discussed last meeting.
The Superintendent has distributed a memorandum. It was a response to Mr. Levek's question about percentage of the transportation budget against the, the local budget. I probably gave you too much information going back almost 10 years, but it, it was at my fingertips and I was able to give it to you. So that's, that's exactly what you got. I will say I started to look at some other communities and and we're kind of right in the middle because we've got some communities that are around 4% and then some are much less at 2%, which upon reflection of that, every, every community is, can be a little bit different as far as who they transport. So a community might have lower costs because they only transport elementary school kids and not middle and high school. So I'm trying to defend our numbers. I think our numbers are, are good without going into real deep analysis. And trying to, so what I started with is some of the data. We looked at comparative districts for cost per pupil. So I kind of started there, but they're not necessarily transporting the same type of kids we are. So I started looking, so, once again, it was just all over the place. We seem to be kind of right in the middle in a lot, in a lot of cases.
Yeah, there's no need, and I didn't want to feel that you had to defend any of the numbers. I was curious to find out.
I thought it was an excellent question. I thought it was an excellent question that made me think about where we stand against other communities. So thanks.
Well, and, and I like to, so just looking at a number, you know, 600,000 doesn't tell me a lot, but when I look at it comparatively in the comparisons and the percentages, what I'm seeing is that we're consistently about 3, 3 to 3 and a half percent of the entire school budget is related to transportation.
Right.
So when that goes up, we have, we have an impact to, to, to the overall budget.
Absolutely.
So that's what I'm trying to look at is, is those comparative numbers. This is why also with the budget proposal, I asked to come back with what the percentage is because it helps me to, to understand, you know, if it's, it, it just helps me understand the relative numbers to, as opposed to just a, a general number. So I do appreciate you coming back to us with the information.
And there might be, just to think about some of this data, I mean, this is, these are facts and really not analyzed that much, but I want you to remember that some of these little dips down to 3% and maybe a little below 3%, that might be tied to enrollment during, during those years. Maybe there weren't enough kids to, to transport. So now, now we're kind of building up with, with more students in our district, so our costs may have an impact to that too.
There were also the years where we charged for transportation.
We did. However, something to consider in that, having, having been here through that, we saw that many, many families just chose to drive where they could. So, so the intended financial boost may not translate into, you know, what you're looking, you know what I mean? When we were talking about fees earlier.
Sure.
It may not translate to something meaningful or impactful.
But to Mr. Levek's point, the, it's, the 3.4% has been very consistent for the last four years.
Yes.
And, you know, that's, that's probably what we're going to be dealing with next year as we move forward. Unless we get a lot of money and that percentage will go down, right?
As a, as a total percentage of the entire budget, it, it's consistent, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
Not for me, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
There's no action on that?
Nope.
Okay. Oh, now we are open to the second public comment, which is open to anything. Come up, Mary Foyle.
Mary Foyle, Flat Hill Road, but I'm probably here more as union president and a teacher in the district. And actually, I wish we had some people to be watching on TV or afterwards on YouTube, some of the people here earlier over the budget conversation. I do want to talk about the Fund Our Future, the Promise Act resolution. I wish I'd actually garnered more conversation here because I think there's some misinformation or lack of information. And then I applaud you guys on wanting to write your own piece. I do want to clear up some things that I heard and encourage you to maybe do a little research before your meeting. So the state reps and senators of this area have signed on, on the Promise Act. I know you mentioned there are different bills out there. The Promise Act, which is actually what you're, I mean, you guys are free to do what you want, which is actually the, the resolution you found, you, you were given to look at is actually different than Baker's budget. And I have that stuff actually if that's needed. I don't have it with me. Is different than Baker's budget. Biggest area is money, but the also strings being attached in Baker's budget has a lot more strings attached to it. And it puts a lot, if schools aren't performing in the way that the commissioner feels that schools should be performing, he can attach what money people get to that, which then it becomes you as the elected board don't get to control the money that you have. And that 900,000 and change amount is, you know, a loose number. Like, would it exactly be that? No. Is it a few hundred thousand dollars for sure under the Promise Act? And when we're looking at budget shortfalls, I think for me, this is a no brainer if we're looking at the shortfall. And then to use some numbers from before, which was presented in that Fitchburg State, now is what that, what the foundation budget presented in 93 and what we're based on now, has us at eight special ed aides, and I'm a person who relies heavily on those special ed aides in my classroom, eight special ed aides, we as a district have 40. And some would argue that we could probably use more for more student needs to be met. Special education teachers, foundation budget says we should be having 13, we have 32. Classroom teachers, foundation budget says we should have 117 in our district, we have 106. So that's where those shifts are happening. We have those in more areas. We have to make up that, that shortfall in other areas. It is recommended we should be spending $200,000 on teacher PD. I know we get the money from elsewhere, but in what was presented at Fitchburg State, we're at zero. And you heard from the Superintendent earlier that PD is important. Instructional, instructional materials, foundation budget has us at 900,000, we're at 100,000. And then as far as, you know, I know the School Committee Association hasn't necessarily done this, but in looking at, and this is just from our area, schools who have put forward this resolution and some places, Board of Selectmen or, or Town Councils as they have it have as well, North Middlesex, Quabon, Acton, Boxborough, Athol, Air Shirley, Fitchburg, Groton Dunstable, Harvard, Littleton, Maynard have signed on to this Promise Act resolution. So what I would encourage you to do, I don't know if you guys network with other school committees, but reach out to some of those individuals on those school committees and say, hey, why did you pass this resolution? What was some of your conversation around? Because I do, again, know there's, the third one, I didn't mention that guy because he has no numbers on his, so it's, really you can't do any measuring. And when I stood here about a month ago to talk about the Promise Act, I mean, it really is, we do need to do things on the state level. And the Senators, Senator Tran and the state rep said, you know, they have no issue talking to people about it. I suppose if I were to say as LEA President, hey, Representative Benson, neighbor, would you mind contacting the school committee? I'm sure she said, she would say sure, because that's one of the conversations that we've already had. I didn't take it as in they would be reaching out to people. But I do really encourage it when we're looking at this budget shortfall and we know we're looking at a budget shortfall next year in all likelihood, and, I mean, insurance itself is never going to come back at that number that we had at this year. This really seems something to say, hey, and imagine if almost every city, town, school committee said to the state, where for this Promise Act, we want that change, that I think it becomes more than just symbolic. I think it becomes, we are pressuring you to provide for our students as they should be providing for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any more?
Oh.
Phyllis.
Phyllis Luck, 50 Sunset Lane. First of all, I think you guys have the hardest job in town. I think it's a really difficult position you're in and you're in it every year. You know, funding education is a really expensive project, you know, and, and you're right. I appreciate that you have pointed out that, you know, it's not like one area of town is spending wildly. You know, everybody is trying to do the best we can. And yes, our taxes have gone up 30% and I don't know. Well, it goes, they go up 10% every, what, every four years, right? Right.
I've only been here.
Well, two and a half percent, well, two and a half percent every year. So it's every, you know, 10% every four years. That's, that's a lot, you know, so it, it's difficult. But I had a question for you. I know people talk about per pupil expenditure. How is that calculated?
Dr. Burnham?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Cassidy because there are many different lines and if you're not, it's really important that the way we charge money, the way we budget monies be put in the right line in the budget, because essentially how we're, we're reporting that data is going to be reflected. So Mr. Cassidy might be able to provide some more detailed insight, but it's not just, it's not just one metric that, that they look at.
Yeah, you know, to give it meaning, you know.
Yep.
How's it figured out?
So.
Thanks.
Okay. Was that it?
That's the question.
That's the only question? Okay. All right, so Mr. Levek was looking for whether or not, if we get the full 4, 4.2%, what's, what's our per pupil expenditure going to be?
Did you already calculate that sitting there?
I had no fear because really, it's, it's something that the state calculates. It's really not even, I'm not, I would like to, to report that I'm, I'm in my office trying to calculate that for, for the committee. These are state numbers that, that really look at really what we report on our end of the year report and based upon the number of students that we serve. I, I think if it hasn't been said, the number that is in that slide excludes out of district students. So those are only in district students. And we're comparing our numbers against other in district students. So that's all of our salaries from custodians to our teachers, to our superintendent, all instructional materials, kind of put into a, into a basket and essentially divided by the number of students that are served during the year. by the number of students that are served during the year. And that's all I can say as far as how the state calculates that. I know our numbers changed at some point during our presentation. So they do take a look at that from time to time and report out different numbers. Is that helpful?
So just salaries and nothing about costs, just that?
Everything, everything.
It's the budget divided by the number of students, less the out of district placements.
Right, so that number that we.
Budget, including costs?
Including, it's my understanding that.
And it looks right if you, if you look at the budget and then divide it by the number of students. That's almost dead on.
Pretty close, minus, minus what, minus what he's saying for the out of district placements, that's not.
Okay.
But all of the other data points that we can access through the DART tool or through the radar tool, they really do use our budget and the line items to determine what our, what our metric looks like.
Yeah, the state is becoming very sophisticated as far as how districts spend money and at some point it'll probably get into classrooms. So it's exciting and scary in the same way, right? So.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do I have any other public comment from the public? So now we're on to reports, charter review. We have another meeting?
We have another, our last meeting.
Our last meeting.
It's next week. The articles have been written, so the attorney, the attorney's gone over the bylaw or the charter and signed off on that. The warrant articles have been written, they'll be presented to us next week and the vote will take place on the 6th.
Town.
And then our two-year project.
Will be done.
Will be done. Athletic advisory met yesterday. We had some guest speakers from, oh gosh, where were they from? North Middlesex.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So yes, they came to talk to us about a consolidated booster. There is interest, so the committee, or the, yeah, the committee, voted yesterday to proceed with a, pursuing a consolidated booster for at least one event for the next year. They want to try it out, see what it's like, see if they, how they can sell that to the rest of the booster clubs. Obviously, not every booster club was present. We did have, we did have a large crowd of folks there last night, but not every sport was represented. So that's, the hard part is getting everybody there at the same time. But the people who were there decided to move forward, so they are going to coordinate a sub-meetings amongst themselves that doesn't necessarily need to include the AD or, or me. Because if they decide to, to develop this 501(c)(3), it would not include the school committee. Remember, it would be their own board, their own organization. So they need to, they're going to start working on that together.
Okay.
And then the baseball is doing a fundraiser, a canning fundraiser.
Candy one?
Canning.
Oh, canning.
Canning fundraiser.
Okay.
It's a traditional fundraiser that they do.
Yes, I think I've seen them.
That's, that's all I have there.
Okay. And your next meeting is in May?
I'm sorry?
Next meeting is in May?
Oh, yes, sorry. Next meeting is the, it's always the first Tuesday of the month.
Yep, okay.
At 6:30 PM.
Finance.
And we limit it to 90 minutes, so.
Oh, you've branded the time? That's brilliant.
Yes, yes. We, we used to go too long because there was.
Yep.
And I'm, I'm doing my best to keep us on track. We ended, we started at 6:33 yesterday and ended at 8:03, so it was exactly 90 minutes.
Well done, well done.
Thank you.
I bet they appreciate that, too.
They do.
I'm sure. Carol, finance committee?
Finance committee met and approved their budget, you know, it was their budget presentation, which they voted to support at town meeting. And they went through all the warrant articles, all 36 of them. So it's going to be a long day at town meeting and they did say there would be food, so.
There are going to be food there?
That's what they said.
Oh.
In cafeteria, in the auditorium?
Cafeteria.
Cafeteria, not in the auditorium. There was some discussion though, after the budget presentation, there was some discussion about exactly what level service means. And I thought that was really interesting because the town manager continued to refer to our budget as being the only one that was not level service out of all the town departments. And the chair of the finance committee said that level funded, level, not level funding, level service budgets perhaps don't mean the same thing to everyone and that there was at one time a committee in town that dealt with that particular topic. So she introduced the thought that she might like to start, reconvene that committee to take a look at exactly what level service is. What is level service for us because of changing enrollments and stuff is a little different than what level service would be to DPW. You know, it's different. So, so I thought that was interesting.
It was, I did watch that.
There you go. The blizzard bags we've decided to put off till after town meeting.
Correct. Wendy, wellness advisory?
Wellness has not met since our last meeting. We're meeting next Tuesday, next Tuesday, I believe.
Policy subcommittee met on Monday and we presented the policies that we've been working on and I think we have another meeting.
We do next Thursday.
Next Thursday? Is it next Thursday or after vacation?
We talked about Thursday. We talked, yes, because we wanted to have something for our meeting, I believe.
I don't have it. Are you sure it was a Thursday?
No, it wasn't that Thursday because I have a flack board meeting, so it's not.
23rd then, or we?
It was on the 3rd, I don't see it. I don't, I don't have it on either.
No, we'll have to double check that.
The 25th?
Might be. Yes, because that would have been in time for our next meeting. I know we discussed that we wanted to have another meeting prior to our next meeting.
So that would have to be the 22nd.
Monday.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, right, okay.
I was thinking the 25th was Monday, but yes, 22nd.
Okay. PTO?
PTO, this Saturday, Parents Night Out. If you haven't gotten your tickets yet, lunenburgpto.org. It's going to be at Townsend Rids Country Club hosted by Stump Trivia. The next meeting for PTO is on the, yep, April 8th and the main topic is the superintendent's budget and fundraising.
Did anyone have a school council meeting since our last meeting?
Primary school has not.
None?
I know middle school did, but I was called into an issue at work and was unable to attend.
Okay. And capital planning is done for the season until next fall. Topics for future discussion?
I would like to discuss fundraising, district-wide, buildings, clubs, just an examination of what we do and how we do it, why we do it. Sometimes I think just like everything else, when you examine the budget, when you asked your teams to look at not just what you always do, I think that it would be great for us to examine that because we're looking at financial pressures everywhere. So, you know, fundraising puts pressure on families and communities as well because, you know, they're turning to others. So just what are, what are our needs truly in? Are fundraisers needed for every single thing they're utilized for?
And the timing of them.
Yes.
Because it seems like a lot are going on right now in the spring and I didn't hear about any in the winter, did you?
Yes, and that's the thing is when we're examining them district-wide, you know, building to building.
Stagger them.
Well, no, sports, sports.
But sports are different.
Clubs.
Right now, it's, it's classes, student council.
Right, but I think the point is also looking at what, what is the fundraiser for? For example, if there's a fundraiser for something small regarding, you know, X where, you know, might it be easier if each student is only responsible for $30 of something? Are we having a fundraiser for that when you might pay more for the items in a fundraiser to get to the amount of money needed? I don't know if that's making any sense.
So potentially just writing a check for the, and then 100% goes to?
Or potentially the option, for, for example, there is, there are some things tied to graduation that seniors are fundraising for. Those items, if the items they're selling are between 15 and $20 each and only a percentage goes to that. The items are things you would wear, some flowers, some, some small things that if you're thinking in your mind, you're wondering, per student, if you bought two of the items, you might pay the same or more than what that actual item costs for that one student and you still wouldn't have paid for it because you're only getting a percentage back from the fundraiser. And that's the kind of thing that just, are we looking at, does each one make sense for what?
Kind of like to understand the efficacy of, of the fundraising event, right?
Yep. And if there are many going on at once?
Or a 5% return.
Right, right.
Whatever.
Is it the same fundraiser that's always done, but is it the one that makes most financial sense? Especially if you have, you know, seven others going on in the district that students might all have responsibility or, you know, a part in. And, and what, what is money being raised for? For example, sometimes, you know, in sports, it might be to support things for, for banquets or things like that and then you're asking the public to potentially fund an expensive meal, which is, you know what I mean? Like it just.
But that, but Heather's point, that, that is different. We do have, the advisory council has to approve all the fundraisers. They do provide the details for what they're raising money for, how much they plan to be at, what the requirements are to, for, for the student athletes as well.
And the family caps.
Yeah, family caps, all that. So we, we work that out pretty much with the.
With there, but what's the district doing around it?
And that's, that's a challenge because I'm not, there's no mechanism in place currently for me to be privy to what fundraisers have been approved for athletics. So I don't know when I'm approving fundraisers for other avenues.
What else is going on?
What else is going on?
And that, and that's sort of the, the thought in my head around looking at it globally.
So would you include external, like Boys and Girls Club is doing the fundraisers, PTO does fundraisers, you know, the Lions Club, you know, are, are we looking at a macro look at the fundraisers that are taking place in town in the community?
I don't know, only because, only because if our students are being asked, if you're participating in X, whether it's school-wide, you know, we have fundraisers, something like, you know, things to defray field trip costs that, you know, that are school-wide, you know, those students are being asked to participate in directly versus something that the Lions Club is doing is not something that our students are being asked to participate in directly.
They've asked students to face paint.
Yeah.
They've asked students to face paint, like at Stillman's. But anyway, I.
But that's, that's not monetary.
For future discussion.
So, yes.
I don't know, is it?
It's volunteer, it's volunteer hours if they wanted to do that just for fun, but that's why I'm, there's just a lot out there with it and I'm wondering if we can't examine if we're as streamlined as we can be.
But, well, and to that point, that's one of the reasons that the athletic advisory was formed.
Absolutely.
And now that while they're looking at possibly doing a single.
And honestly, it was, that was something very personal to me because you could see it there. So now it's how do we integrate it into the district to ensure that we're looking at it in the same way that, that the advisory is.
Any other items for future discussion? Okay, we're going to executive session? So we're, we're going to be going into executive session in accordance with Mass. General Laws, C 30A, Section 21, to connect strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel or to connect collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, not to return to public session. Bye, bye, we're going into executive session.
Voice of vote?
Yes, we need a roll.
I saw you leave once, I was waiting years ago.